Call this public work session between the council and commissioners to order. This is a public meeting, but we will not have public comment. We're just trying to decide our course of action here. So I will open the meeting up.
So Addy and Kent and I have been in several conversations over the last, I don't know, three to four weeks. Addy, is that probably accurate? That we've been communicating. Wagner Irwin and Schilling does a great service for us. And the current agreement, and they're here to talk about the current agreement, what they provide, how the job classification typically works for them. And our agreement that we have with them is, it's very one-sided currently. The agreement is for $5,500 a year. I know that this year, just through July, they have expended in expenses and costs to their company two and a half times that agreement. And I know things have changed of how job classification used to work and how Henry County is utilizing Wagner Irwin and Schilling in job classification. And so what I would like to do is turn it over to Addy and/or Kent or both to explain how job classification, how we got to this point and how it's used to work, how we're currently doing it, and what we really need to look at moving forward to structure our relationship with Wagner Irwin and Schilling. Does that pretty much cover?
That's pretty much it.
All right.
And we appreciate your time this morning.
If you, Addy, could you move the microphone a little closer? There we go.
They should.
It is green.
How's that?
I think that's better.
Well, Henry County's been one of our longest-term clients. We started our consoling firm back in 1979. I think shortly thereafter, Henry County became one of our very first public sector clients. We did the first codification of all your ordinances back then. Then through the years, we were asked to do several other things, one of which was personnel policies that we've worked with the commissioners on over the years. But the one continuous process or project has been the Job Classification and Compensation Plan. What we thought we'd do this morning, and just for a quick update and briefing, we've given you, we've given you a copy of what's called the Factor Evaluation System handout. Talks about the classification and compensation system itself. Just as a refresher, I know there's been a lot of turnover, new faces, and the whole job classification project that started back in the 1980s and has been updated various times since then is still in place today. And this, this handout describes the basic foundation of that system. The Factor Evaluation System is a point factor system that was developed by the Department of Labor. So it's, it's part of the Department of Labor. It's a federal government program that everybody paid for. Back when Governor Otis Bowen brought the system to the state of Indiana and it was installed for all 36,000 employees. Following that, most cities and counties, and this goes back to Henry County, started using the system as well, simply because of its comparability to other public sector entities and the wide use that it was having in Indiana. The state of Indiana still uses it today. It's been updated and revised and is flexible and has been used, you know, for, for all those years. And, and most of the counties, I would say well over two-thirds are using the same system as well as a lot of the municipalities and a number of school corporations as well. If you look on page two of the handout, the, this graph pretty well shows the division of what we call job categories and jobs within those categories. These are job titles that you normally would find where the jobs are assigned to one of these four. This, this list is not, it's not exhaustive. These are just examples. But the job classification system itself divides the jobs into these four core job groups: PAT, COMET, POLE, LTC, which your jobs have been grouped that way for years. The PAT jobs, Professional Administrative and Technological, these are the professional jobs, engineer, a lot of department heads would fall within this group. Typically, this requires a person in the job to either be a supervisor directing a department, having attained education degree or applying that knowledge to the job. And the COMET jobs, Computer Office Machine Operation Technician jobs, these are support positions that work principally in office environments. You've got your county, all the deputies, court reporters, office managers, they fall into this group of support that fall within that category. Then you got the two other groups, and these cover a lot of jobs. Labor trades and craft jobs are basically concentrated in the highway department, truck drivers, heavy equipment operators. The labor jobs, you've got some maintenance people in various departments that comprise that group. And then finally, there's a group called Protective Occupations and Law Enforcement. This group is principally populated by Sheriff's Department people, whether they be merit police or they be correction officers, you've got dispatchers that would be a part of that group. So you got these four basic job categories. And all the, all the, everything is kind of built off of that. So once the, the job's in a category, and on page three is more of an explanation in the definition of what those categories are. There's a couple more on page four, and these are more or less extensions of the other four basic categories. Executives, which are in large groups or with large employers, this may be the top rung of the PAT jobs. There are certain jobs that'll be in special occupations. Think jobs like probation officers where the, they are professional jobs, but they would be set aside into the special occupations because of the nature of the, the pay schedule that you have to follow, judicial conference scheduled by the court. So you set those aside as, as a group by itself. So the initial project here began with collecting job information, and back then, we circulated job questionnaires to all the employees. They completed them, their department heads reviewed them, they signed off on them. And at that time, which we don't really do anymore, we interviewed every employee at that time. Every employee in the, from Henry County had a personal interview. And from that, we were able to take the questionnaire, the interview information, and put together a draft job description. Those draft job descriptions were then returned to the elected officials, department heads for their review and sign-off. And once that happened, then we had a job description that we used to point factor each job according to these four different job categories: PAT, POLE, COMET, LTC. Each one of these categories, and I think Addy talked about this at the last meeting, they have a, what they call a set of point guide charts for assigning points to the job. So each one is different. So you have a job that has 340 points in PAT, that's not comparable to a job in COMET that may be 340 points. The guide charts are different and unique to each one. Law enforcement, you see things like loss of life and, and working around bad people. You get more credit there than you do for somebody who's working in the auditor's office as a deputy. So we're comparing like jobs with one another. So once they're in these job groups, you, it's, the system is built where you only compare like jobs with like jobs, like salaries with like salaries. And from the extension of that is taking those jobs and doing a pay survey and collecting job information or salary information from the external market by category. And then making that analysis to see where you are as a county respective of each of the categories in the external market. And that's, that's what we've been doing for a number of years, and we've had updates on the proj, on the, on the original study. There was, not too many years ago, we kind of, we did a blanket questionnaire, did an update of all the descriptions at one time, and just did them all again at once. I forget what year that was. I think I mentioned it in this memo that I'd sent to Bobby a little while back, but that was back in 2000. When?
2000.
2000, we did that. So the system's been in place and it's been updated, and we've tried to stay on top of the, the job classification system and make sure that it's been maintained. And without having a full-time HR person or anybody else assign that duty, it has been one of our services in terms of our maintenance agreement with the county. Our maintenance agreement with the county has been basically, you know, three things that are noted in that memo: revising and updating job descriptions, verifying the factoring, providing information to the committee if a job has changed, and then providing an annual wage and salary analysis. Well, following the original study, we did that on a retainer basis of $300 a month. After 2000, it went to $450. So that was really, it was about the measure of our hourly rates to about the amount of work that we predicted we would do for the county. I think that what has happened is this has ballooned to being a lot more, a lot more request analysis and more. Some of it, I think, is stemming from the pressure for recruitment and hiring and keeping employees. And I think that the original plan has been, and it's followed through when the county had the finances, was try to stay in close relationship to the external market. And by doing that, we didn't see as much activity in the way of job reviews, reclassifications, restructuring, restructuring. But when there becomes a gap, then I think it's only human nature, people start looking, well, what about the classification system? If I just get my job upgraded, I can go to a higher level. Well, that's really, the issue's really the market, not, not just changing the job because I've got two more duties or I've become an expert about what the person's doing across the hall, and I don't know why she's making more than my person. And then we get into this whole skirmish of, you know, everybody looking at everybody else's job, and then I'll take a job description from the clerk's office, and I'll take that language, put it in my job, and then I have to be paid like the clerk. That's not the way the system works. It's really intended to, to look at, it's, it's, every duty in a job description doesn't have a dollar sign on it. That is not as, as what's being factored. It's really the level of responsibility. What's the consequence of error in the decision you make in your job? What's the scope of supervision? Those are the things that we look at or as part of the system when you point factor a job. And again, they're point factored by category. So we've come to this place now where I think we've, you know, we're looking at a lot of different pe, moving pieces, and it's really, I think, a credit to Addy's work and what she has done to spoil Henry County to some degree by, can you do this? Can you do this under your retainer? It's, it's almost like, you know, well, it's a buffet, we can get, you know, we only pay one thing, so load up your plates and let's go. Where we've got to kind of put a stop. We're either going to have to go on an hourly basis or come to some agreement, I think, where here are the core things we can do for a retainer, but these other things are going to have to be add-ons, so.
Cafeteria plan. Here's your base, here's your base plan. So I know that Kent, when you and I spoke originally, job classification didn't meet on a monthly basis or every other month. It was something that was done once a year, early in the year to prepare for budget time for the next year's budget, to review or if any new jobs, you know, it was not a monthly cycle.
Chinese water torture.
Yes, Chinese water torture. You are correct. It, it can be difficult. So at what point did, did you see that that changed from going, doing the once a year or maybe even twice a year to every month and, or the multiple requests coming through?
She's really been at the point on, on.
Right.
Probably, I don't know for sure without looking back, but I would say the last probably four to six years where it's really picked up.
Good.
And some of the other counties we've worked with, they set some deadlines where you have your reviews in by a certain time, you do them all at once so that you're not doing them every month. And then they flow into the, to the budget, so.
And I, I know in, I believe it was 1997, I believe it was in March of 1997, there was an ordinance or a resolution actually laying that out for the county. It was, I don't know who the commissioners were at that time, that, I think it was April to, Debbie, do you remember April? Right around April, I think it was, that process started for reviews, maybe from January to April, that process started to review, very similar to what you said was previous. I'm not sure how we got off of that or away from that structure. No blame, no, I, I just, I can't answer that question. But it, it almost sounds like we need to get back to some sort of structure as originally intended for job classification in 1980 or 1997 or, or whenever it was. During our conversation, we had spoke that if a new position was created or if, you know, a major event changed, then something throughout the year would take place. Am I correct on that?
Yes. Yeah, it's, you know, once you have the base system, then it needs to be some significant change to the job. Now, you may, some of the duties may change, but those duties may not be any skill level difference than the ones you're already doing. And I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding that people think, well, if I just keep adding more duties to the job, then it's going to go up. Well, those duties may be much the same as the ones that you're already doing. So it's not the volume of duties. We're presuming you're going to be working a regular work day and you're going to be performing duties, but it's still at the same level. It's not going to go up unless those duties are, it's going to be something significant like supervision or there's been a restructuring and jobs have been collapsed and all that. But then, they need to be looked at. All jobs don't just rise. If you're eliminating a job and somebody's assuming, you know, something else may go down, but oftentimes in our minds, everything's going to go up, not down. And once you start this process of, I think, reviewing and reclassifying in what we call classification creep, well, they did it across, they did it across the hall, mine's like that, okay. And it's hard for council to say no. They're not really in a position to be able to tell whether or not, you know, that's any different, so there's, there's this obvious yes unless there's some glaring reason to say no. I think the other thing that we've seen, not maybe in this county so much, but we've seen in other places, well, don't worry about it, council, this is not general fund money, let me do what I want. And during a previous life, I was the community development director of the city of Muncie. We were funded by federal borrowers. I'd go to the council and say, what do you care? You know?
Right.
Well, your guys aren't going to be paid more than the mayor's staff. Well, why not? They're, they're better. But nonetheless, councils have to look at across the board regardless of where the funding sources are. But I think sometimes we'll see that councils are more receptive when the money is plentiful in some funds and others. But in a classification system, we want to make sure that we have pay equity amongst like jobs and people performing similar tasks in other offices that who don't necessarily have that discretionary money that's coming in to supplement what you can afford out of the general fund. So there's just a lot of moving parts to this stuff. And I think, over the years, we've learned a lot of lessons. We, I think, pretty well understand how it works. It's just a matter of, I think, councils, commissioners following some procedure and trying to be as fair as you can as you apply those procedures and realizing you're always going to be getting presented with the exception. And does it fit within the system or not? And if it doesn't, let's, you know, have a reason to move it out of the system, but that's going to be more rare than it is going to be common, so.
Example of one of those is RGIS. When it was reevaluated recently, it, because of the skill set, it is now an SO versus what, I don't remember what it was before, but I think now it's an SO position because it has the, the skill set required to be the GIS administrator. Is that her title? What, what's Angie's title? GIS Administrator. Bobby Plummer, even though she's in IT, can't just go in there and do, do that. There's a specific skill set involved. So I, I know in the last year, we have done some that are, that have been SOs, and maybe we have made some SOs that maybe shouldn't have been an SO, based upon our conversation today.
Well, I think the other thing, again, to keep in mind, it's usually not so much the change of a job as it is what's going on in the market. And the demand to recruit and hire and find qualified people for the jobs is a real challenge. So it's not really the job changing so much, it's how we have to compete. And I, and I understand with tax dollars being what they are and the limitations that you have, and oftentimes, well, let's just look at these people who are in the same boat we are. That's really not the question. The question is, how do we have to fill these jobs that we have here? We have to perform this work. And what's it take to get people into these positions? And we're seeing a lot of recruitment issues, as you know, in, in law enforcement, in prosecutors' offices. We did a statewide survey last year for the Prosecutor's Association. Some of this stuff has to go to the legislature, there has to be some source of more funding to be able to deal with this. But I think, you know, councils, commissioners, we need to get on the same page in terms of how we're going after those state dollars, federal dollars where we can find them, to be able to fund what we need to do is work. Because obviously, these local funds aren't going to accommodate the demand that we have in the workforce for higher salaries and benefits, so.
Where, where, I mean, every, we all want everybody to be at market value, external market, but our pie is very, the size of our pie is very limited. And, you know, next year, the legislator may, legislation may make another decision that nobody at the local level agrees with. It affects our revenues, which they do almost every year. So they can say, look what we did, we cut your taxes. Oh, look at those, those poor locals, they have to raise your taxes. So, you know, it's difficult to get to that because the pie is only this big. And if you take a piece of the pie out to put it over here, you're, you're taking the piece of the pie from somebody else. You can't just move it around. I mean, that's all we've got to work with. And it ma, it does make it difficult, unfortunately.
Well, from our perspective, on our end with the compensation side, we're, we're presenting information, I think, that, you know, gives you those ranges, gives you those targets, but it, I, it certainly lets your employees know that you are paying attention to this problem. And if you can make a commitment to go so far, no, we can't go to market, but we can go this far, instead of saying, well, we can't do it, so we can't do anything, just throwing in the towel, which I, I think, you know, that sends a terrible message to the employees. And I, I think the taxpayers really expect more than, than what we're, we're getting sometimes.
I think that's why we, a couple of years ago, asked for the 10% below market because at that time, we had employees that were averaging 10 to 30% below the full market that you gave. And that gave us a goal or a target because no way with the limited funds we had from the legislature and tax revenues were we able to quickly, expeditiously, like we would like to, move everybody to full market. So I don't know how many other people, you provide a low market, which is 10%, but we have been edging. Many more percentages of our employees are at low market now than they were four years ago.
Yeah.
And we have five, I think it's right at full market. I have another question that's self-serving. I've been following your, your data for your sheets that you gave us, Addy, for the last four years. And for the first time ever, there were two positions that the market went down in 2024 versus 2023. Commissioners went down about $100 and the council went down $2,000. How can that be in this market? That's your full market. Because all of a sudden, we went from being below low market to being at full market in one year, and that's never happened in the four years I've traced that. So did all the other counties you, 14 counties that you used, everybody got a decrease in salary?
I would have to look at the, the data to see for sure, but it could have been where they've But it could have been where they've, a couple of counties froze salaries and didn't give raises, may affect the percentage that went up versus the, how everything else had moved.
Wasn't going to put you on the spot, but I'd never seen that before. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? You, you've referred to ranges and we've, we've seen market. And Addy knows I asked these questions when she was here directly. I specifically was trying to get to give us the range, not exactly what the market is, simply because we were, we, in the, in years past, whatever you guys came to us and said this was the market, that's what we assigned. And that has changed over years as the dollars have become less and less plentiful. So Addy, if you recall, my request was can we get range for every classification, low and high? We understand what the market is, we assume the median. Having that low and high and us adopting a scale with a low and high where we can slot employees into that scale. I have seen that in other counties. And one of the questions that came up just a little, or one of the items that just came up a few minutes ago was the SO for the GIS administrator. It's, I think, was previously a PAT position. The professional administrative and technological positions. Those things don't grow at the same rate as other positions. They tend to grow a little faster. In my experience in my day job, and I apologize for being late. The day job took priority this morning. Those scales also tend to be wider, if you will, or more variability within those scales. So having a 10% below market as a target, which is a great target, especially as far behind as we have been. What I'm looking for and would like to see is what those scales are, just to see the low and the high. And then I also want to know what the, the width or the depth of that range is so that we can make better informed decisions as council to where to slot these folks in. I guess what I'm going to ask is loaded, is what I'm, is what I'm referring to out of the ordinary? I mean, I've seen job classification documentation from other counties that do have ranges, lows and highs, and, and include steps based on longevity or, or tenure to, to increase in there. Is that something that makes sense to you?
Well, providing, like we discussed last time I was here, we can provide the, the ranges. And originally, for years up until 2021, we only provided the external market, that salary. That was the target. That's what the county had requested. And then when the county started lagging the market is when, back in 2021, when we started adding that 10% below to give another target that was maybe a little more affordable for the county since the, lagging the external midpoint. The, in giving that ranges, we can do that. Now, as far as longevity steps in there.
We would need to define those.
Right. And if you create something, some sort of grid with steps in there, you have to remember that if you assign that specifically to years of service, you have to be able to fund that each year. If you have someone on step two and they're supposed to go up next year, you have to be able to have the funds to do that. If you don't, you freeze people and then it gets all messed up and out of whack very easily. So we usually don't advocate those grids. We would advocate a separate longevity pay, similar to what you're doing now, where that way, if for some reason the council can't, or the county can't afford the longevity piece, you can just take that away and it won't affect the base pay. And you won't have people off on their steps or anything. And then when you can afford it again, you can reinstate it. We've had a couple of counties where they've considered freezing longevity pay for this year so they can make some of those external market pay adjustments and then looking at reinstating it next year, depending on how the funding looks.
So if, if, if we don't have a range and we're not using longevity as a way to move up in the range, how can an employee move up in the range? Or is, or is what we're doing the right thing? Have a single number and everybody's at the same number? If they've got two months of service or 25 years of service, everybody's at the same wage?
I, I think they can, they could provide the range, but that's completely outside the scope of the current contract.
Understood, yeah.
We can do that analysis, but again, and just restating what Addy said. In county government, we really believe that if you're going to look at longevity, that that be over here, the base rate is over here.
Completely understood. Got, got it? My question is, if that's what we choose to do? And we have a range of wages for Comet 2, how do I distinguish where an employee falls in the range if they're brand new or they're more experienced or more tenured? Or should everybody in a Comet 2 make the same exact wage regardless of their knowledge and experience level?
I think ideally, the base rate goes with the job. What's the job? What's the job worth? So if Comet 2 should have a base rate for all Comet 2s, the longevity is person. That's not the job. That is the individual. So we're going to be rewarding people from the guy that's got five years to the new hire. The new hire is going to start, he's going to get a longevity amount of zero. Five years, whatever five years is. So that distinguishes the difference between the employees as far as longevity goes. But the base rate is what the job is worth to the county. Now, that should be in some relationship to what the market is for Comet 2s, Comet 3s, whatever. So we can afford, we can do the, we can give you the range, but we have to be very cautious about how we move anybody in that range outside of, and you're not going to, if you're going to have longevity separate, that's not an option. So you're going to do it by performance? What are you going to do it by? Because we can't discriminate. The last thing we want is, you know, 10 people lined up here. We're all Comet 2s and we're all making different money. Explain it. We can't. So we want a base rate for Comet 2, 3, 4, then longevity as an add-on. Anything longer tech pay, add-on, you know, there's all kinds of add-on pays that you can consider, but as far as having a range. I was thinking about this last night. I, I think what we're seeing in, in, with a number of our counties this year, more than any, is it's almost analysis paralysis. If we could, we've got so damn much information, we're almost paralyzed to make a decision. We want to make it the right decision. We want to make, quote, "the perfect decision," but we're not, nobody, we're not going to do that. So we're going to have to make the best decision that we can, given the facts that we have right now. And I think, you know, what you have, and again, we can do that whole thing, but when she does this range and you say, okay, how's that going to affect our workforce? Then it's a spreadsheet by department, by person, which that's, that's, those are where the hours are that racks up this additional time. And I'm not sure if that really helps you or, or not, or if you have, if you have enough information right now to make a decision, given the budgets and the limitations you have. You know, that's, the finance side, we don't know.
My concern has been when we get the numbers, the market numbers, and I mentioned this to you before, Addy, is, is longevity in there? Is matrix pay in there? And looking at the salary ordinances and wage scales from the other counties, they do have the steps in there, as I mentioned before. Some of them do, not all of them do, of course. And if we are comparing those numbers, where, where I sat on job classification and as a county council member, I got to the point where I don't know if matrix pay is included in those numbers or if longevity pay is included in those numbers. Are we comparing apples to apples or to oranges or pears or watermelons or grapes or what? I was struggling trying to identify if the numbers we are being given include longevity matrix pay by some of those counties that have built that in or not. And, and if so, moving forward, can we, I know this is contractual agreement, but can we include in the contract that we will always see them without, without any longevity or without any matrix, and we'll calculate those separately? I'm fine with that as long as I can compare apples to apples.
Well, the external data, we get our base salaries. We get, if, a lot of the counties that we do work with, if they have a grid, we know where the base salary is in that grid. So we're not counting a position with 20 years of service. Now, if it's not labeled, you know, there might be some instances. But again, we're looking at hundreds of salaries for each category. And we're looking at the, the middle 80% of the data. So if there's something that's really, really high or really, really low, it's getting thrown out. And we've been, you know, this is my 23rd year doing pay compensation analysis for counties across the state. And I can, I can usually detect something if it's off. And I'm very familiar with a lot of the, especially a lot of the counties that are included near your survey and how their pay works.
I, I really appreciate that. And I want you to know that I am in no way questioning what you guys do. I think you guys do fantastic work. I, I just want to make sure we're asking you for the right things. And, and not knowing what we have been asking you for as a new councilman, I'm, I was struggling to know. And so I'm glad we've had this conversation and can, everybody can learn and understand what's included in those numbers and how we can move forward making those kind of comparisons and making decisions on how we do that. So my experience with consultants is they're fantastic. They have all the right people and, and great, fantastic stuff. But if you don't ask them for the right stuff, you're not going to get the right stuff. So I, I want to make sure we're asking for the right stuff.
I can intervene on one thing. I'm guilty of analysis paralysis using your data because these notebooks are full of your data, N E I C's data. I can answer one question. What you provide us does not include longevity, but it does include matrix for the poll fours, the rogue deputies. Because I'm looking at it right here and all the poll fours are not the same. It has their longevity. I mean, their matrix and the two are different. The, they're similar, but they're different. But you do not include longevity in what you provide us as far as current salaries?
What I was, I was referring to the external data that is provided as the comparison. The, the sheriff matrix here is different where their salary on the salary ordinance does include the longevity. So you're looking at the salaries for those, for the Henry County Sheriff comparing to the external market without longevity. So going forward next year, I mean, we can break out that as showing the base rate without the longevity. Because I wasn't aware until this year, when I was speaking with the sheriff's office, that that longevity was included on the salary ordinance for those, for those deputies.
That'll help, getting back to comparing apples with apples.
But that will reduce their pay that's reflected. So the costs will go up for those deputies.
Okay. And for all others, the longevity is not included in at least what we have reported as our current salary.
The other deputies, as far as I understand the salary ordinance, the longevity is separated on the, on the salary ordinance. Is, is that correct, Debbie? Yeah?
No, wait, so they gotta give longevity to all the salaries?
It's separate.
It's separate. So they have the base pay and then they have what each employee is getting in longevity?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moving forward, and I think all of this history is great and all of this information, I think it, it gives a greater understanding of the services that you provide, how it should work within each county, how it does work in each county. So moving forward, because obviously, we need to update the agreement that we have with Wagner and Sheila. When, I was shocked when I heard that their expenses was two and a half times what we pay them so far for the year, and we're not done for the year. So moving forward, what would you like to see? What do we need to do? And I know you, historically, and I think the retainer was done the way it was out of just working with Henry County for such a very long time. We were given a, a pretty good deal. I don't know what you charge other counties. You know, that's none of my, my concern. But I, I think that you guys have worked for a number of years.
Well, I think it would be best if we give you a couple of options where we could either go all hourly rates and, and do away with any retainer period. So it's basically whenever you call, then we're charging you on an hourly basis. Or we could do a combination where we could try to hone in on just the basics for the job classification and compensation work and make a, you know, educated guess on what that's going to require as a base service for a year. It's going to at least double, probably triple what we've been charging. So if, if that's what you would like to see, we could provide you with a couple of options and you can go from there.
I think that's a, a, a good thing. So I know a couple, I know Angela Coxhead wanted to come up and meet with Addy. And, and when, when she called Addy, you know, Addy said, that's outside our scope. And Angela said, you know what? I will pay for their time. I know Mandy Fleming is wanting to talk to you. She's the same way. And I appreciate that they recognize that this is outside the scope. I, I don't know that anybody is contacting you outside of either council, commissioners or HR. Is anybody else, has department heads been contacting you?
I've had a couple, but nothing, I mean.
Okay. Because I, I think this is one of those things that needs to be streamlined through HR or commissioners or council or a combination so that we don't have. Now, Mandy and Angela both did reach out to me and asked if they could contact you. But I, I think we need to make sure it's streamlined that we don't have how many of our department heads contacting you directly, that we need to have a.
There needs to be a gatekeeper on your end.
Yes, yes. Exactly, exactly. And I think sometime before, I think there was a form that got filled out. Is that correct? There is a form that gets filled out. So I think we need, we need to kind of internally work on, a little bit better on our processes, those to who, what, where, when and why. So we're not just everybody contacting.
Can, can I interrupt, Bobby?
Yes, you may.
We talked a little bit about having 2023 numbers and 2024 numbers and trying to not intermingle the two. And in years past, my understanding is a lot of the work that you guys would do would be in the early part of the year to, to establish things for upcoming budget season, I would assume.
Yeah, you missed that conversation.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, yes.
All right. I'm, I, I don't want to re.
Go catch up, go ahead, catch up.
I don't want to rehash it all, but, you know, if we can, that was part of my concern when getting numbers across the first several months of the year. Am I looking at the, the numbers that were developed for last year? Or am I looking at current market numbers or? And I think I asked you, Addy, at the one Friday session, does it make sense for us to put these, a scale or, or these classification wages in place once a year and not vary from them and establish a timeline for when that works? So I get, my thought is, if we do that, then that would also limit the amount of requests that we send to you for changes. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I've got a copy of, and you, you were, let me make sure that my microphone's picking up. So we had discussed before you got here that in 1997, resolution ordinance, whatever it may be, terminology of the timeframe, April to, I think you and I had discussed this as well. And that, you know, it's typically done just once a year, maybe twice a year at most to keep things kind of. And then if something. to keep things kind of, and then if something, a new position opens up or something major happens with positions, then we can go back.
Perfect. Thank you. I apologize for missing it.
No, 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 you're fine. I couldn't remember at what point you came in.
You had asked about the cost to do, for look at the EMS, the poll classification. So we have, I have that here for you.
Okay.
But I think it, if we, if we pull out the EMS, it would be our recommendation, because right now we have all the polls together.
Right.
So we have the merit poll, we have the, what we would consider civilian poll, white dispatchers EMS and correction officers. So our, this would be a good time to go ahead and separate them actually into three groups. So we would have the merit poll that would be standalone, the EMS poll, and then like a civilian poll that would have dispatched corrections and some others that, maybe some other sporadic ones. So we've provided that.
Okay. Good. And I will, I will make sure to give this to Mandy because, you know, she understands that this is her.
Is it okay if I speak?
Sure.
I would like to say in our budget hearings, we put a placeholder of $12,000 in for Wagner, Irwin and Shealy for 2024, based on, I think we were all shocked to find out the usage of number of calls and requests that the Henry County has forwarded to you. That's just a placeholder, but if you, they do decide to go to a contract on hourly, we'll have a year experience to know whether to go, how to go next year. But given that you've, we've expended that much the first half of the year, I think doubling would be a good starting point. And then we can keep increasing it or whatever, but at least that budget's enough money that, and hopefully what Bobby just said, we don't have 20 people in the county having you on speed dial.
No, and again, we, we control that through having a gatekeeper, either through the auditor, commissioner or council president or somebody that limits the contact.
So Steve, do you have, before I move on with the final, do you have anything?
No, I liked it the way it was because it was saving us a bunch of money, but I know that kind of, and I'd like to continue that, but obviously that's not option A or B. I just, I just worry about where all this extra money's coming from.
Commissioner's budget, I, I can answer that. Sorry, if I had to say it.
Just don't cut it.
Yeah. Because Bobby was spot on with what she said earlier. We only have so much pie. And if you take it from one to give another, who do you take it from? And I've always, I've battled with that every time somebody says, we need more for this. We'd love to give it. Trying to accommodate that and come up with the money and council does a good job of trying to figure out where that money comes from, but at some point we run out and we're getting dangerously close there now. That being said, if we're going to use your services, which obviously we need to, we need to adhere to what you say. And I guess that's part of everybody, like you said, everybody's jumping around trying to, I do this, so I need more money. That makes it very difficult for us to be able to perform fairly with everyone. And like you said, everybody wants to give everybody more, but if you're giving us a range or a description, we need to adhere to that and say, this is what we're doing because that's what we're paying you to give us that advice for. With that being said, that's all the comment I have on it.
Joe, do you have anything?
Just thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
So I guess the next steps would be, if you want to put together the various options that we have moving forward, I would suggest to the council to increase 2024's budget at least three times what we pay right now, just to give us some room. To have it in there and then we can go from what you, because we're already at two and a half. Your expenses are already at well over, probably a little over two and a half times what we pay you. And I will say, you guys are very responsive. You've taken very good care of Henry County. I don't think that there's a time that I've called Addie or emailed Addie that she's not been available. And hopefully we can, we can streamline on our end to make it easier on you guys to provide the numbers that you need to provide, so.
Well, we appreciate that. And we, like I said, Henry County's kind of been, you know, one of our long, dear clients.
You always remember your first client.
You do.
I know, I know. I still have my first client for my business.
I think there was a guy named Bailey who was auditor back then, you know?
Yeah, you know, you do. You just always remember your first ones.
Yeah.
Debbie, do you have anything? Stephanie? Okay. Anybody? Ken?
We put $12,000 in for next year. And if you go to an hourly basis and if everyone in the county doesn't call you, we should be fine.
Okay.
I'd like that.
We need to make it where it doesn't come from myself.
Yeah, they declined it.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I, yeah. If it doesn't come from either commissioner or council or HR, then you don't, I mean, you can just let them know that they need to-
Yeah, and I don't think it's been a problem.
Yeah, but yeah, it, it should come from either HR, commissioner or council member. Department heads should not be calling you directly. Unless a commissioner has said, absolutely, you can go ahead and call, you know, one of those things, so.
Can I add to it, Bobby? I know we're getting really close to the end. For what you're going to prepare for us, for what we would like to see in the contract, if we're going to develop what that pay is for that particular classification, are we still asking for market and 10% below market? That's what I'm, that's what I, in, in the contract. So what I'm, if, if what we're asking for, what I would like to see, and then I'll open it up for, the Shannon's opinion, not council's opinion or anybody else's, I would like to see, you, you mentioned, Addie, that you have that 80% in the middle. You throw the outliers out and you say, here's, here's the range and here's the market. I think council needs to see that. Council need, and job classification as well, I don't want to exclude the, the advisory committee, but we need to see what that market is as well as what that 80% look. We, I, I still want to see how wide it is. And, and I want to be able to have job classification review that for every classification. I'm not talking for individuals. I'm talking for the classifications themselves. Let job classification look at it, make recommendation to council, so council can establish what that classification wage is for that year. And I'm, 10% below what market is might be fine for some positions. It might not be for others, depending on what we're doing. So I think I still have a desire to see what that scale is, the, the width of it. Is that outside the scope of what we're asking for and is that out of, out of the question or out of the ordinary, I guess?
Well, the, the external market is the midpoint, which reflects-
Agreed.
-the, the 80% of the data. So we use, like I, like I talked about last, that Friday I was here, so for each category, for Pat's comet's poll, we are selecting benchmark positions and collecting salaries for those. And then using the factor points for the jobs, establishing an external pay line that is your external market for each of the categories. And so, so you're seeing that. So we can easily add the, the external low and the external high, so you can see that range. But showing something separate with the 80%, that's not going to show you anything.
That's, that's what I'm asking for. I, I don't, I was just referring to the data blocks that you said. So showing the high and the low and, and council with, with recommendation from job classification can establish then what that, that wage is for the entire year, whether, whether it's 10% below median or, or 50.
Right. You can use that range that we give you. Here's what the market looks like. And then the council can say, okay, we can't afford that. We're gonna, we're gonna make it this range. It's close, but not quite to the market. But you're using that data. What we give you is a tool to use-
Yes.
-to set, and we know that you can't always afford to move everyone to the, the market like, like you had in the past. So that gives you, okay, well, we can't afford market, we're going to set the low, let's say 80, 80% of the market. That's your low that you established, or maybe that's your base number. You've used the market, then the data we've given you to set a new range. And then the council adopts a base rate or a range or both for each classification level.
That, that, perfect. That's what I would like to see because every job classification document that came in with the market number, that was provided with that, every department head or individual that came in, that's the, that's the dollar amount that they expected they wanted to see recommended to the council for their wage change. And that did not fall in line with what our wages look like. And so having that previously adopted wage or range, whatever we're going to do, and then when you provide the information for whatever those special ones are, those would be out of the ordinary, right? Or, or if it's a brand new, it can say, this is a Comet Two and we already know what that classification pays.
Right.
And we can go back and look at the market data that was provided to us if we want that, and then the market data will be updated for the previous year.
Yeah, so I think what you're referring to is adopting pay schedules each year. So after you get the data, the council would adopt the pay schedule for the comet. So comet one is this, this range or this base rate-
Yes.
-and so forth. And then you have that in place for all of 2024. And then you would adjust that accordingly for 2025 based on the external data we give you next year.
Yes. I just want to make sure what we're, we're asking for is, is, I didn't want to come back and go, wait a minute, where's this? Because it wasn't in the contract. We're not giving you that. I, I, I just want to make sure that, that's what I would like to see. I'm open to what others would like to see. I think if we have those classifications and we can see what the, the scale, the, the width or the depth of the scale is, we can decide where those classifications should fall. Like I said, everybody was low, so a target of 10% below market was great when we're still, and we're still trying to achieve that. But we can decide whether each job should be 10% below market or 10% above market. We can make that decision as, as county council with, with recommendation from classification if we have those scales to understand what we're looking at. Just having one number doesn't give me the comfort to know what I'm looking at, so. If that's, works for everybody, I'd like to see that. I'm welcome to what everybody else has to say.
If you could just put, put together various options and how that would look like-
Okay.
And then we can go from there.
Can I ask a personal question? Addie, are you a senior consultant?
Principal consultant.
You're a principal consultant? Okay. I'm just doing calculations in my mind, given the handout you gave.
Do you have any consultants?
Yes.
Give us their numbers.
I think after today, she's going to be a super-
Super, super. Super, she's a super senior principal consultant. Yep, yep. I don't, I don't think anybody else has anything, so if you want to.
We ready to adjourn this?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you guys very much. This was very, very informative. We probably should have done this three years ago.
Greatly appreciate.